Mine's acting kinda funky. I got the agenda out, but I just, I can't seem to...
You just let me know and depending on how well you behave, I may or may not share my screen with you.
I can't seem to get it. Here we go. If it moves, we'll be all right. All right, now it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order, start with the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Teresa, please take the roll.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Procheck.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
And Kaila is absent with notice.
All right, do we have any additions or action on the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Two seconds, that's a fourth, all right. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Schilling.
Yes.
Procheck.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Matson. All right, how about minutes from the 10:21 meeting?
Motion to approve previous minutes on 10:21, 25.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Matson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Procheck.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, any bills?
No bills.
Public comment for anything that is not on the agenda? Yes, sir, come on up to the...
You got time now, or you wanna do your closing first?
Nope, that's where, that's where we're at.
Okay, all right. I was here back in July.
Yep.
I was a relative, so remember back in July, I was here.
Yep.
Complaining on all the water.
Yep.
That was coming off that Black Thai and Central States property there. Um, I talked to, I stopped in City Hall, I don't know, probably four weeks ago. I was looking for dirt to fill in for the ruts out there. They gave me Craig's number, called him. Cause I just want black dirt to fill in all the wash outs out there. Justin called me a few days later, said, "Let's meet," so we met on the 22nd of October. Um, I left that meeting pretty pissed off, I guess. Um, basically, they told me it was my fault out there, that the water washed through my field, so. Um, I guess it's my fault, I'll take care of it. I'll just go, I got an excavator coming on Thursday, we'll rip that culvert out, up to our Black Thai, and we'll have our problem solved, if that's all right with you guys.
What culvert are we talking about?
It's gotta be for that, um, retention pond, that...
The retention pond between Swinson's and Wenefield Ground there. And that'll solve my problem with the water washing through my field, if that's what you guys want to do.
That's private. It's not hers.
Yeah, it's not, it's not our ground, right? It's Black Thai's ground.
You guys allowed to, allowed that in there, so. So how come you guys don't have any jurisdiction over it then? You can't regulate that.
Can't regulate.
The water's still coming out of there.
I know there was a report.
Okay, so, give them the background.
Go ahead, Michael.
As noted in the meeting, the plans for Black Thai and Central States were reviewed based on what the design engineers submitted. Peak flows are less than the existing flows.
They are not. How am I getting flooded at all, two years in a row? That is not, that's a trend. When I'm getting flooded all two years in a row, that's a trend.
Yep.
You can't tell me that's just coincidence, that's a trend. And this wasn't even a wet year. The last two years weren't even wet. I mean, what's gonna happen when it really does get flooded here?
The last June, we had a rainfall in the region, and this year's very wet June.
It wasn't all that wet. We're average rainfall for the year here.
We had some dry years prior to. But as, as noted in that meeting, both those detention ponds, both for Central States and Black Thai, were reviewed.
I'm getting more water out of there. I don't know why you guys can't understand that. There's more water comes out of there than what used to be there. And that's why I don't understand. You guys can't tell me how much water is coming across before you develop it. And I guess that's my problem. I don't understand how much water before, and you guys tell me it's the same amount or, or less than what was coming. But I have a hard time believing that. When I'm getting flooded out, when I never got flooded out there before.
Have you talked to, and I'm just out of curiosity, have you talked to, I'm sure you've talked to Black Thai, cause it's...
I have, but that's not my job, that's your guys' job. Well, talk to them.
Okay, well, I don't think it is our, our job to talk to them. I mean, it's, cause it's, the water's running off of their property onto the land that you're farming.
But you guys allow it, so you should take care of it, not me. I shouldn't have to go out there. That's your guys', you're getting the tax money off of all that. Why do I have to go do your job?
I was not in on the meeting, I know these guys had a meeting, and I thought you guys had this...
So, why don't you let Michael finish talking and just went through?
So, sorry, we, we look back historical imagery all the way back to 2007 or before. On your land north of, what is that, 263rd?
258.
Or 258 and Vandemark, back in 2007 or so. Up to 2015, there was a grass swill from the culvert under 258 to the north, which conveyed the water. After further discussions with you, 2015, 2017 or so, you installed tile from that culvert to the culvert running east-west under Vandemark, and then began to mow that grass, or not mow, sorry.
We farmed the grass, we farmed it, all right? We took it out because we didn't have an issue with the water that was coming before. So why should we leave grass waterway when we're gonna farm it? And now, the last two years, we're getting flooded out, and you guys want me to leave a grass waterway like it was before? Well, it's a difference, 300 feet is not gonna slow the flow of water else coming in there. I'm still gonna have a rut, it's still gonna wash that grass out. Look at the ditch in 258 here. That's a thousand feet from where it comes in from the ditch and comes to that culvert. That's a thousand feet, and there's a rut in there. So you're gonna tell me that that water isn't gonna do that to my same field for grass waterway in there?
Was it, when you started farming, was it, was it ready to dig?
No, it wasn't.
And you're, upon discussions with you afterwards, it was the rutting that was the issue through the farming land?
Yes, and the flooding down there. The last two years, it's flooded about an acre or two out down there because of all the water down there.
Well, as far as the rutting issue, as, as we noted, the grass waterway's gonna control that much better.
How is it when it's got thousands of feet in the ditch and it's already got a rut in there?
I'd really like to be able to hear you. I'd like to listen to what you have to say.
I mean, I'm, all right.
Is this in your report, Michael?
This is in the email that Justin provided to you, Lisa Craig.
Yeah, I got that.
In, in the report like for this evening, or just in this...
Yes, in the report for this evening. It is not on the agenda in any way, shape, or form. We're gonna have to probably set up another meeting and talk about this deal, because we're not gonna get it solved right here in the next five minutes, it sounds like, right?
No, I'm not.
Well, we can't take any action in any way.
Right, right.
Can we delay it till next two weeks?
We're not gonna decide anything tonight. It's not on the agenda, we're not gonna decide a thing.
All right, can we put it on the agenda, though, or not? Or you gotta decide that later?
I mean, yeah, if you want it on the agenda for next meeting.
That'd be the best bet. Let's do that. Then we'll make sure we have Michael here, all the parties here, and we'll talk about it during the regular meeting, not during our public comment.
All right.
All right?
Fair enough.
Good?
Do that.
All right?
Thank you.
That's on the 18th.
Anybody else? All right. We're at, we're at the 7:05 public hearings for applications hearings, liquor license renewals. Are in your packet?
Make a motion to renew liquor license as presented? Or do we have to do each one?
Nope, you can do one.
Make a motion to approve all license as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, my computer's running really fast.
Did you sign a second?
I did second.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. My computer's running so damn slow, I can't even get to the next thing on here. Maybe we should just call. No, can we, we can't call, no. All right, hearing no discussion, hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Schilling.
Yeah.
Procheck.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
This is why we had the conversation, Craig, when we were walking in. Sorry about that. All right, next up, we have Resolution 2025-10. This is for the assessment on 12th and Oak Street. I would assume, is that why, Eric, you guys are here?
Yep.
You wanna start, or?
Sure.
Yep.
All right. I'm sure you guys all know who I am, Eric Bartman. President, well, will be the coming president of the Hartford Area Development Foundation. Uh, here to discuss the street assessment for the properties along North Oaks. As you guys know, the city received grant funding to cover the costs for its improvement, uh, which is, which has already allowed the tourney foot assessment cost to be reduced significantly. Significantly, we appreciate the city's efforts to secure this funding, with the assistance of the Hartford Area Development Foundation. Um, grant funding strengthens cities by improving vital resources that support infrastructure improvement, improvements, community development, and long-term economic, economic growth without increasing financial burden on the taxpayers. I feel this assessment is contradictory to what we as the HADF and the city are trying to accomplish. I guess in my memory of how this went, how this grant went to begin with, the HADF was wanting to submit, submit this grant, correct? Amy was the, Amy was the city employee. We wanted to wrap 12th Street into that grant, so the city...
It flipped and the city became the applicant.
The city took it.
Yep.
So let's just say the city did not take that grant, and the HADF ran with it. We accept, and we were awarded that grant to run Oaks. To me, this assessment wouldn't even be a talking point. What if, if the HADF put that street in versus the city, correct?
You guys, it had to be a city to apply for the grant.
I was gonna say, in order to get the EDA to live around, the city had to apply. And you were a co-applicant because it was through your land.
That's why, I mean, that was, that's where I'm trying to, for memory.
Right. I recall that they, EDA was the one that said, I, without regard for 12th Street, or am I missing something? Man, that's been...
No, 12th Street was included right out of the gate with...
I was gonna say, they both were included right together. They wanted to do 12th and...
No, Oaks was always in.
12 was added.
12 was added, okay. Yeah. But I think they were the ones that said, we should either co-applicant or make the city the number one applicant, right?
Yes, EDA did because of the 12th Street.
I understood it had to be a city.
That was my understanding. I thought in order to get that grant through, was that the city had to be the one...
Because we're using disaster funds provided to communities is where the money come from. With EDA, it got the money, it was from disaster funds.
Anyway, I mean...
I guess we're here just to request that the city waive the assessments on the Oaks. We've had a lot of traction out there. I mean, Art, you sat in on a meeting.
Yep.
Last week, we had a purchase agreement on another, it's not signed, but it's in the attorney's hands, going back and forth on another three and a half acres. Ideally, we, you know, just kinda like to keep some of our funds, cause we're gonna have some expenses moving forward. If we wanna look forward with some more ground and some more development in the future, and we just asked the, the city to waive those assessments. I mean, there was a group, there was a group of businesses here not long ago also asking for...
Waive the assessment, and we did.
It's a little bit different situation.
Yes.
Um, but this is also a unique situation, too. This is a group of volunteers that are trying to make the city of Hartford better, and we feel like it's just by assessing this property and, you know, essentially having most of this property covered by that grant, we feel that's just kinda contradictory for...
What's the total, um, what would be the total cost to the HADF on...
Um, the HADF is about $36,000.
That's a lot.
Um...
That's not much.
Now, there, there are several, right?
For a nonprofit, that's all.
They got a few different tracts of land, yep.
I guess my question, I'm not sure about the beginning of the conversation, because if HADF would've gotten that grant, you would've had to pay this the full amount or something.
I don't think so. Because if you don't give them, then, to me, like, let's take, for instance, on Windsor Heights. If those guys put their own street in, you guys are gonna go and assess that street.
Well, it's a public, so the assessment...
But they paid for the street. That assessment amount, that money doesn't exist. You wouldn't have gotten that through the grants. So you would've had to, as HADF, put enough, whatever that remaining balance was yourself.
What do you say, Michael?
Well, the city had to put 152,000. If you would've been the grant owner putting in the street, you would've had to put 152,000. So you're actually paying less than if you had gotten the grant by splitting it up among all the businesses.
So, just to tell you, so, the city does have cost in this. It's only 90% in grants, so we had to pay the other 10%, plus we had some change orders in it. And then we have our assessments, so really, the city ended paying 261,000. And like I said, if we wouldn't do that grant, that would've been all on the HADF, if you would've been the grant.
Right, put on a, put on a, on a developer. A developer puts a street in, the developer is not paying an assessment, are they?
No, but you gotta pay for the street. So you would have the full cost of the street.
That's what I mean, if he applied for the grant, and the grant funded it.
You'd have this $261,000 to pay.
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so yeah, the HADF was a developer, they're putting the curb and gutter and then all that. And they would not have to pay.
You're saying the 10% would've not been on the city, would've been on you guys.
Right, in his scenario, yes.
Cause we ended up paying, what'd you say, the number of...
261,000.
So, I mean, I hear ya. Nobody likes to have their streets assessed, as we found out when we did this deal up here on Western. If we ever wanna fill the hall here, that's all we have to do. But that, you know...
I mean, I mean, I think this is a great deal for, it, it's a win-win. You've got new street, curb and gutter in front of you, and it's only, you know, $28 a foot compared to other assessments where we would've had $250 a foot that other people paid throughout town.
What is there, what is you guys' hold? Do you, have you added it up, Amy?
It's close to 60,000.
60,000.
Yeah, it'd be a full...
52, and then Eric's profiting, he has another $8,000. So, yeah, you're right, close to...
And then just to clarify, this is just for the HADF street assessment, not the other businesses on there, is that, just to clarify?
Okay.
You know, before we did this project, we had to pass a resolution and assessing. And we, before we even decided to do the project, you know, took the money, that was back in November. We sent out very similar, an assessment like this that showed, we at that time, you know, just an engineer estimate, the cost being $39 a foot. And this went to every single property owner, including the HADF, you know, for agreement, we didn't have anybody protesting it, so we went ahead with the project. Luckily, bids came in low, and so now, it's 39, it's actually only $28, so it, I mean, even, thankfully for the city and for the property owners, it's even lower still. But I mean, that went out in November for, before we ever...
So what, how did that, um, I guess I'm a little confused with where the 10, why the, where the 10% came into, into play, why did they...
Cause that was their, that was EDA's grant guidelines.
That you could maybe only pay...
Correct.
Yeah.
Almost everything we do has some...
Matching.
Call it whatever you want.
Matching, yeah.
Strings, matching, font, call it whatever you want.
And there's a few things that it didn't cover, like the pre-designed work, engineering debt cover, some of the testing.
Right.
It always has, and that's, every grant has different stipulations, so there's always added cost in there.
Yeah, I just...
It's still a great deal for the city.
Yeah, I mean, I think back to, and obviously, Western Avenue is a whole different animal, a whole different animal, not...
It was already enrolled there.
Not comparable.
Right.
But, um, I just wonder if there's, um, in our, uh, cause I understand, right? So the HADF is a nonprofit organization, it's run by volunteers, trying to obviously grow that industrial park. I just wonder if there's a...
Well, I think there's...
It's a unique scenario, right? I mean, it's, it is a different, and I think, I think it's a different, I think it's a different scenario than a private developer who's self-funded doing those things. So I, I, I see the reason for asking for it, because it's not, I mean, if it was Eric Bartman developing that, you probably wouldn't be here asking for that, right? Uh, so I just wonder if there's, I get it's a great deal, I'm just causing discussion, because...
Well, I mean, I think it's a good question, and...
Yeah.
Rather than not assessing it, could it be assessed at the time? If the parcel's sold, or has the parcel sold by spread footage into your...
Well, the whole deal is, in one year, we're gonna get billed by the county, no matter what.
I mean, we do have, we have a resolution passed on an assessment policy, so...
Correct.
You'd have to change that resolution in order to, yeah.
Right.
I want you to give them that, that budget time, you have a budget of $100,000 for growth of the city. You haven't come and asked for that?
Well, that's what I was...
Come on, Craig, slow down, Craig.
I know, we were here in August, like, we were here in August '24 to...
You have a board spot open, right?
What was it? 55590 in August '24, but...
Yeah.
We were approved for that, we never got that allocation.
Hmm.
So we could use those funds to go and, to work with us.
We could probably left hand, right hand, right?
Keep in mind, you also got a free road out of this deal, basically.
What's that?
Keep in mind the free road that you guys got out of this. That's a big consideration. It's a nonprofit, it's gonna continue to develop, it's gonna bring the property tax dollars, sales tax dollars. This isn't something that's just for, not no gain to the city whatsoever. There's true benefits that are gonna be realized.
I get it, and, but you have to understand, we gotta be careful when we do stuff like this, because the next developer that's standing up there is gonna say, "Hold on, you guys did this for the HADF."
I understand totally, and I think it's a, I think it's a difficult precedence to set that was basically already set, but you also gotta look at not only Oaks, but what was done with 12th. And 12th is benefiting way more people than those business owners.
Yeah, yeah.
Way more people. The mass landing people are...
Using it like crazy.
And the part...
You see a lot of traffic pass there, Lisa, all the time?
Yeah, they're, I mean, that's... And the amount of people, I mean, it's not busy out there.
He's here, too, we'll talk, we'll talk to him shortly.
It's not busy out there now, traffic was, but, I mean, the amount of people that you can use that for walking and, you know, walking the dogs out in there. I mean, obviously, as that gets developed, you know, people aren't gonna run their dogs out in that open area, but, um, 12th Street is definitely benefiting the residents more than the businesses.
Um, do we have a deadline on when we have to have this decision, right?
We need to pass it. No, but the deadline per our policy only gives till October 1st of next year.
Oh, no, that's what I didn't mean.
I guess, if I am in the side, this is whatever. My reaction tonight is, I think we need to make the assessments, because I think we're asking for trouble if we start making special considerations. And then I, I think the question for me is, do we want to do something else with HADF?
Right. Only caveat that I'd say, Cindy, is the fact that, you're right, there is a special situation here, a little different than it is on Western.
Very different.
The argument that I would say, though, is you're doing this for a nonprofit, that's trying to better the city. When it's a private developer, that's a different story, it's a different circumstance altogether.
So, to be clear, you're asking for HADF, not anybody else on the list?
Yes.
And then, there was a paved street in on Western Avenue. There was a road...
Brand-new paved street with this...
We, we do the same thing in residential, so once they paid for it, they don't pay for it again. If they haven't paid for it, if there's no road there, they pay for it. I paid for it, probably have people here, maybe not. I paid when my road got paved. I, we do. So I think Western is completely different, there was no road there.
So for my clarification, once I paid for 12th Street, I don't have to pay for that again? Like down the road, if it gets...
It's curbed and gutted, and it's, that's the way, maintenance repaired. But every council can change, but that's a policy we've gone by.
Like, for instance, just for clarification, like for, um, may I use Doc Circle?
Yep.
When you put that in, if that needs repaired, redone down the road, will that get assessed to those owners? Or he already paid an assessment for them?
He didn't assess it, cause he built it.
So if those need fixed down the road, will those residents have...
That's where you get into the sticky deal, cause once the developer builds it, curb and gutter paves it, guess what? They sign it over to us, same as Jeff's gonna do on Second Street.
Right.
Once that's built, he signs it over to us, and then it becomes the city's responsibility. So it's my understanding, if we need to fix it, that's on us.
So how did, I mean, you're, you're probably talking about part 10 where you paid for yours, right?
Nope, I lived, my first house was up on, um, South Fire.
And that was not paved initially?
Neither was Mickelson, when I built.
Yeah, it was gravel, it was gravel.
Both were gravel. A lot of the newer developments, I mean, if, if there is a developer doing it, but in that case, there was lots, it wasn't a development.
Yeah, and this is where, like, these assessments, and I think it, you know, it's kind of interesting, because if I use Oaks Avenue every day, and I don't live on Oaks, and that road is down...
It's every street in town.
No, I know that, I'm just, but it's an interesting idea. If I, I use Oaks every single day, but if they go and they tear up that whole entire road, all of those property owners are paying for that, but me...
That's what I mean, is it...
I live a block off, I don't pay a dollar for it.
There was gravel.
No, I...
It's a, I understand that it's, it's policy, but is it the right policy?
Right, that's, yeah, that's the question.
Has been for...
Right, it has been that way for a long time, but what I'm asking, what I'm asking all of you, is it the right policy moving forward? Is it something that maybe needs to be looked at and addressed? Because it's, I'm just gonna use 12th Street as an example. Everybody except, I mean, now, you guys do have, you know, an access on there, but there's not that many accesses on 12th in that section that you guys have done there. And, I mean, like the HADF, they're paying for frontages of ponds, you know? There's not even any usable property there. It's ponds for, for the 12th Street assessment. So, it's benefiting other residents, but the landowners are paying for it, and is it, like you said, the, your example with those, isn't the, isn't the right policy to have in place? Is there a different way to make these assessments and pay for those?
Typically, though, Eric, it comes down to dollars and cents. We gotta figure out how we gotta pay for all this stuff, too. That's what, and...
But our assessments, our assessments don't even cover a, barely a fraction of the cost, right? I mean, if we wanted, cause we've had, we have this conversation every year, and it's a... it's a, but this is a, you know, we could charge, we could charge five hundred dollars a linear foot and maybe be within the market of what it costs, right? I mean, I'm just throwing out a number, but I know, like, our, our assessments compared to the actual construction costs are maybe a third, maybe le, maybe less than that, Michael, right?
Right, yeah, a new road is about a thousand dollars a foot, but then that's just construction.
So that's what I'm saying, so our assessments, you know, are, are, are truly a, not, not a fraction, but a small part of, of that. I mean, I'm...
Exactly. Because the city pays all that of the difference, all that extra cost, we pay engineering fees, we pay testing, that all gets thrown on the city because we put the max at two fifty a linear foot. If this was, you know, if we hit...
It's like the street maintenance fee.
And maybe you can answer...
Street maintenance is floor sale gravel, but it still doesn't cover the cost, but it helps.
How many streets, moving forward, though, as the city of Hartford evolves, how many streets will the city of Hartford be building and have to develop?
You're, you're really only got, you got Railroad, Meth third gravel yet, so those, if they ever get done, or when they get done, they can be assessed. City owns a majority of it, the school owns a proportion of it, there's some homeowners belonging there on Kelly that would have to pay an assessment on it. You got Jennifer Drive, which if we ever did something up there, that'd be all assessed to homeowners. We've got Forest Street. Well, look, we've been talking about Kelly Avenue...
Kelly Avenue, because all those property owners will get assessed, right? If, when, when or if we redo it.
And that's because that's not a standard, that's not a standard road. That's why they would fall. I got a question though for Teresa, hold on one second, I want to, okay. How does this work when we have a, what do we call that, a resolution? What do we call it? Resolution of necessity? Excuse me, I shouldn't have remembered that.
So basically, with that resolution, we said we are going to assess the joining property, that's that we're going to pay for this project with and also city funds, I guess I can read it.
Yeah. But I'm asking, Teresa, is can we, with that paperwork in place, basically what Eric's proposal is, is that we're picking and choosing?
I don't think you can.
I, that's the question, that's what I've been saying, you're trying to figure out if we can...
Because we already had everybody on the assessment.
Right.
Yeah, I think the discussion here is, obviously, we have to do an assessment, but then I think the further discussion would be brought up is, you know, is the city willing to help out?
Well, I don't, I don't think we can pick and choose. We either got to assess, we got to assess everybody the same, whatever it was...
Not whether you want to give a money for that.
Correct.
But we can, we can ask for our 2024 budget request that you guys have already approved, the allocation.
That's, so that's, so, how does that, we have a budget, right? So I, but I think there's, I think, like, there's further conversation with that in terms of...
It doesn't even have to be a budget.
Right, it doesn't have to be, yeah, it doesn't have to be a budget, but I think, I think, like, to move forward, we have to assess it, just so we don't set the precedence, and then, you know, if there's an appetite for the council to have further discussion about, you know, we're taking money from, we're taking money from this...
Supporting H A D F.
Yes.
So what you're saying is you're coming to an address request on the agenda, request the allocation from 2024?
I think that, I, I think that is a better route than saying, you know what, we're, because we would have to change the policy on this. We would have, I don't, like, we, and that would take a long time and a big process, and then also, we're setting the precedent to future developers, future landowners, and doing those things. So I have a much easier time saying, yes, we are going to assess the H A D F, and, because if we weren't, then we have to change the policy, and I'm not saying we have the right policy either. I'm not, I, I'm not saying we have the right policy. If someone has a better idea of, like, how do we actually assess roads, send me an email, because I don't know. I, I don't, I'm sure there's some other ideas out there.
I mean, we're doing, I mean, I don't know how you would do it on a tax standpoint, but for instance, at the, for economic development, you have thirty-two sales tax that you use for economic development. There's got to be a way that if you could get, that you're able to pull tax dollars from the residents out of RT and out of Duck Circle, you know, to help pay for street projects down the road, because essentially, all, all of the residents in the city are using those streets. It's not the people that are living...
Everybody, everybody pays taxes, so they, we offer every time we do a project.
Right, but why are the people that are living next to that, you know, in front of that street, especially the people on Western, those business owners, that, you know, why, why are they the ones paying for that assessment when...
I think it's two different situations between Western...
It is, it's totally a different situation.
And they didn't pay.
They didn't pay. But it's no different than, than Kelly, when, when you guys go and, for Railroad Street, when you guys go and pay Railroad Street, why are those...
There's no road there.
No, why should those owners...
Why should it be assessed to those landowners there?
Why can't, why can't there be a better policy to spread the wealth out of the city?
I think that's the discussion that Teresa's saying we had back when we did the resolution, whether or not it was appropriate in this instance to do the assessment, and we all agreed at the time it was. So when we go to do Railroad, we'll have the same discussion.
Yes.
Whatever factors, is it appropriate?
But to your point, though, Cindy, it's not that we're completely hundred percent cotton drive because Western, we made the decision...
It's every time.
After, after the fact, the way...
Every street project has to pass a resolution of necessity before the project.
We have that same paperwork from them.
And that's why we, when we had that discussion with Western.
Correct, correct. And we made the decision.
Right.
Hmm. I guess I would, I would rather, oh...
And I could, I mean, back with Western, I mean, I'm sure those property owners, when that resolution was passed, they probably weren't when you guys were reviewing it.
That's what we have the discussion.
The first reading, go. The second reading, yes.
They don't know it until it's actually in front of them, and the bill is sitting in there.
When they get that letter in the mail, yeah.
They got the letter in the mail, it was just one reading, it was a resolution, they showed up, we had that discussion, and decided not to assess them for varying reasons.
And that was, you know, a thorough, what they call, thorough fair or a...
Arterial.
Arterial road.
Yep.
So it's, it's, it's totally different, it's totally different in terms of the use of those two roads. I think the point is, and I, and, yeah, I...
Have you guys seen this before?
No.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Seen the, before you got the letter, you would see nothing else?
Back in November, it was, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, we have, no.
I said, I think you all about it even.
Yeah, because when we do the resolution of necessity, right, they...
Before the project.
Yeah, they get contacted.
Yep, yep, I got to say, the Western business is muticum. The same exact form goes out, but it had thirty-nine dollars a foot, because that's what we estimated the cost to be, because we hadn't bid it yet, we had another project. So, yeah, went to every property owner.
And this doesn't have to be paid until...
This is just a follow-up.
Next October, they have, yeah, they have...
So, I mean, I, I think, because obviously, we have to eventually move on, right? Like, I, I think, when I, and I'm just talking to the council, I, I think, I think the appetite would be, I, I think it'd be hard to say, no, we're not going to charge an assessment, because now we're setting a precedent. What I would like to do is, is to make some action, but then also have the H A D F come back, and we've got a year, you know, we've got a year before that check has to be written. And then I think if there's appetite with the council to have a conversation, then let's see if there's an opportunity to possibly lower that burden. Does that make sense? I, I mean, because I, as much as I would like to say, and I get it, right, it's a nonprofit ran by volunteers, as much as, as I would like to say, hey, let's just completely forget it, then I just, I, I know that if I, you know, in the next year, if someone thinks happen, it's going to come back to bite us on other projects.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, there's probably some...
But I think there's probably some...
There's some allocated funds that we can hardly use for.
Right, and I think we should get that on the agenda, and let's have a conversation, and, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a unique scenario, but that's where I'm at.
What I'm asking is, since Travis is gone, and we got one empty seat, do we want to make this vote tonight?
We don't have, no, we don't have to make that tonight. We don't have to.
Why?
Or go ahead. Yeah. Yeah.
I know I'm going to vote. I was planning to vote tonight. I also agree with Sean, I'm willing to talk about H A D F.
Other alternatives.
If we fund them, something that might help them offset this cost eventually.
Can you request our 2024 allocation of...
We'll get you on the agenda. Fantastic, right?
We can't request that tonight.
Not if it's not on the agenda. And it won't be a request for your 2024...
Yeah, wouldn't be a request...
You're just going to request funds.
It would be a request of just general funds.
And I could put that on the next agenda.
It would be requested in 24, approved in 24, 25.
Right, right, yeah.
So with that being said, do those funds have to be used in 2025, or will they carry over into 2026?
Nothing carries over in the budget, so those 2024 funds have not carried over. So you're just going to come with a new request for the council, asking for funding to help.
I mean, if we change the budget, we have to do some work, too, in order to do...
But this is twenty...
Right.
It's not like we can't.
But this is 24 allocation that was in the budget in 24.
It wasn't...
It was in the budget, but it was never paid out.
Right.
It didn't carry over?
Nope.
Nobody, yeah, it doesn't carry over, yeah.
But, I mean, the funds stayed in there, so it would just be, we're asking for funds.
I, I mean, I...
How much funds do we have in that? Because it's in that first or second, third?
Third penny.
Third penny, how many, do you know how many funds we have available, right, just off the top of your head?
Couple of dollars.
Couple of dollars left?
Third penny, we, as of last month, we have right under eighty-four thousand eighty-three cents.
But we saw that, there's other things budgeted.
I mean, you don't have to have just third penny, you can use general funds, too, as well.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't know, I will, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-10, the special assessment for the Twelfth and Oak Street project. Second.
And any other discussion?
I guess, I wonder, and I know I'm going to throw a curveball here, but we haven't had curveballs for a while on here, have we? I, I think with, obviously, the conversation we're having, we have a small council already. I think it would be good to have Travis here, obviously, the most full council we can have, and then maybe we can knock out two birds with one stone at the next one, you know, knock out two birds with one stone. I understand I'm on a different side of that, but I just...
There's a way, there's a way you can take care of that, because with four of us, four of you here, guess what? One no.
Yeah, so one no, would it kill it, but we could put it...
What happens if we kill it? Can we put it back on the agenda?
It doesn't pass. So now you're going to have to do a new notices and for a new resolution and everything. Yeah. Could you, resolutions only have one reading, and if you kill it, it's done. I mean, we could send out another notice and try to do the same thing. We just have to go through the whole process again.
Oh, that seems like a pain in the tuchus.
I think discussion's good, but, I mean, ultimately...
Anything else?
And too, I mean, we've got other things to discuss tonight, so is that, is that going to be the process for all of our voting tonight?
Right.
You know?
Well, yeah, I mean, let's get someone for Ward One, because, you know, if we're like, hey, we all have to agree, well, guess what? We're in politics, and it probably ain't going to happen.
It's going to be in this situation.
Right. You understand that I'm asking people, and nobody's saying yes.
I know you are. I'm asking you to ask people.
And I will tell you, can I tell you my next thing? I'm sick of asking. Camera, did you get that? All right, anything else? If not, we'll vote. Shelley?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
And so do you want for the next agenda?
Okay, I have them on.
Okay.
Yeah? Thank you. See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
All right, next up, Resolution 2025-1, creation of tax increment financing district number three. This is the Windsor group. TIF.
Basically, this is the change that we have been discussing. This will allow Second Street to come into the TIF, so they added funds to, they will do Second Street, then the developer will, using TIF funds. So basically, the only thing that really has changed since we look back at this, you know, earlier in the year, was the TIF amount, because they've added Second Street, another couple million, and then the life of the TIF went from twenty years to twenty-five years, otherwise, everything else has stayed the same as the first request. And this is just creating that boundary.
Right.
What's going to be a TIF district. The Windsor group still needs to come back to both the P and Z Board and the City Council and present the final TIF plan, which is, could be very similar to what's in your packet, and a development agreement, basically, that we agree to, you know, what they're going to do, what they're not going to do, just kind of some nuances of developing the land. But that's all got to be agreed on with the P and Z Board and come before you get, like I said, this just creates the district, basically sets the outline of where the TIF is.
Can we, can we keep, if, if we pass this tonight, when they come with the development agreement, can we revisit 25 versus 20?
Because I thought we have fifteen. I thought, because we have fifteen on our TIF.
They were originally twenty.
We have twenty on there?
They, this one was originally twenty when they came, and they moved it up to twenty-nine. But that can be readdressed, because this TIF, this TIF plan is just an example for your reference, that this is a final, so that can be changed.
Let me just clarify, this is just to represent a district.
Just showing the boundaries.
This TIF itself, anything in regards to the, the actual TIF is not in this.
Will be in the development.
So with this, you're not agreeing on the dollar amount, you're not agreeing on the terms, this is what they're suggesting in their plans, but that can all be discussed and negotiated with the developer.
And it could be that there is no TIF at all.
It could be, yeah, if we don't come into agreements about it.
Okay.
Right.
It doesn't happen. This, this is just great symmetry, and the plan, the development agreement still needs to be approved, and you can make changes along the way with that.
That was the only thing, when I looked through it, that I thought.
Yeah.
I don't know that I'm particularly fond of stretching it to twenty-five years.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's something that, yeah, needs to be...
And so it goes through the P and Z for, I mean, and I'm, so it goes through the P and Z, and, okay.
Yeah.
Does the actual TIF go through the P and Z as well?
Yes, first, and then we prove it, then we have to...
It only comes to us if they approve it.
Yeah.
If they deny...
If the P and Z kills it, yeah, then they, basically, they wrangle that out.
Same with district, too?
They approve that.
If they deny the TIF district, it wouldn't even come to us.
Right. Yeah, because they're the first stop along the way, and if they approve it, it comes onto the City Council. So, yeah, what the plan that's in here is for, just for reference, anything in that can be changed going forward, but you're just, at this point, just approving the outline of where the district is. So it's going to be that north and south parcel of the Windsor group and Second Street.
Who knows what the atmosphere is going to be like in here? With TIFs. All right, any action from the council?
I'll make a, a motion to approve the creation of the TIF district number three.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
All right. Get us through those three, yep.
You're going to Spur Street?
That's the third run added, I think, that's why we're calling it three.
It's only our second one in the city.
May, may have passed as first.
The Windsor group submitted one that we originally approved, but it didn't meet the state's criteria, so we had to dissolve TIF two, so we have to move on to TIF number three. We could reuse the number.
Yeah, it's only the second one, yeah.
I think the big, and I, whoever, the, the developers, I mean, we have our TIF standards, they know that, so going from fifteen to twenty-five is a...
That's a jump.
That, so if there was some conversation, I mean, we put a lot of thought into that, and obviously, that's all negotiable, but, yeah.
All right, good enough. You bet. We'll move down to reports. Deputy Rechtinbaugh, how are you tonight?
Good. How are you guys tonight?
Wonderful.
So in the month of October, took this report from October first to the thirty-first, there were two hundred and thirty-four calls for service, which was a decrease of thirty-two. There were two accidents, both of them were without injury. There's three suicide attempts or threats. There were two DWIs, we made five arrests, which was a decrease of four, nineteen case reports, which stayed the same, fourteen citations, and two warrant services.
Sounds like you've been busy. Sounds like you've been busy.
There's a slow one, or, but there's a busy week or two in there.
Uh, I'm going to circle back to one of their questions, maybe Lisa or one of them made. Do you get up there on Twelfth Street?
Yeah, I drive it every once in a while.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have too many nice roads.
I was going to say, they like these roads.
We need to start throwing speed bumps down, I suppose.
I can order stop signs.
I'm surprised on Twelfth and Oaks, there's not a four-way there, just because it's like...
Heavy trucks coming through.
Yeah, just going across there, it's just like weird. Do you like, feel like you need to stop that?
It's a big intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just feels like a four-way, so, I mean...
Well, that's something we could always review.
Right, and I don't think, yet with that, like, there's not a whole lot of houses up there yet, but if there are in the future, that's probably, you know, a four-way.
More businesses get up there with truck traffic, that may be something there.
And I'm pretty sure that, since that's been open, that folks over at Naps and Parte are using that...
Oh, I'm sure they are.
Using that road like crazy.
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of like me using Nicholson.
I was going to say, it's like everybody that comes in on Nicholson now, because I mean, they voided it before when it was gravel and all full of ruts, but...
Yeah.
Like, all people down mine, that don't live down mine.
Every chance...
Everybody uses the road in town.
Yeah, it's all over.
Every chance I get, I drive down your street, Michelle, and squeal my tires. Oh, wait, no, I don't.
I know I catch you on my camera.
All right, anybody got any questions for the deputy tonight? Keep at her. Thank you, Jonah. All right, most exciting part of the evening. Let's go.
Good evening, everyone. We're right into project updates pretty quick this evening. Water Resource Recovery Facility, Sludge Course Commissioning is underway. Did hear from Parter that it does sound like we're still a little flat on sludge.
It's going to be just proper spring for...
So, yeah, so that's, uh, that's just the capacity of the equipment coupled with just hard rock, waste water characteristics. So continue to monitor that and get that direct off the list, but otherwise Punch List is moving along very well. Moving along to Western Avenue, so the city's portion of that product is substantially complete. Punch List has been provided, did walk that with them last, uh, two weeks ago, Thursday now. Uh, that Punch List has been provided, and they've started working on that. They had it out there, they've just shown them exactly what we wanted done, getting that going, wrapping up the sidewalk, all that, all that good stuff, so...
Is the state ahead on you? Part of the project?
I think they're more where they plan to be or where we'll be.
The other big plan is getting traffic on the, getting job on the big four-winder and getting those, those ramps done to get, and get traffic up there. So they're, uh, it was a little shaky for a bit also, but they're, I mean, they're, they're in a good spot for next year.
They raised that quite a bit, didn't they?
Yep.
Is that so trucks don't hit it again?
Yeah, so...
But then she's in a lower ramp.
I think that was the, the first thing that they said when they were talking to us about the project is, is once they got the Humboldt Bridge raised, that this was the next one to raise, because this was, they knew once they got that one raised, this one was going to get it, you know.
Just considerable, like, when you drive it and you see the differences, it's just, it's kind of mind-blowing.
Yeah. The other thing is, is as you're coming off those exit ramps, it's still, it's still a little bit to look up, but sightlines should be a little bit better. I know before if you were, um, you know, headed north into town off that, that western off-ramp, looking left, it was, it was tough to see cars, uh, sometimes, so... That's another thing that they said, the project's going to fix, so, yeah, it's, it's come along well for, for the size of the project. Back to cities projects, around Swinson Park, project close-up, closed-up documents are included following the report for council approval. A C warrant letter has also been provided by Zach Rice Construction, just if the city doesn't come back in the spring, just with winter, whatever it may be, they'll come back, come back, I don't know, maybe that. Make sure that the seat establishes, so that one's balanced in very good. Citywide water model, H2S did provide the preliminary projects for the report and anticipates having that report, uh, next week for city review. Lastly, on the shared use path, continue to push that board with the DOT, still planning design this, this fall, winter, with bidding and construction starting in the spring. Quick report, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Michael, and then I see we got some pay requests.
Do you have the cabinets in the wastewater treatment plant yet, or December? So February or then? We're good, bye.
Yeah. For those questions, uh, since the mayor noted, a couple, a couple action items. First is change order one to Zach Rice Construction. On Swenson Park, it's a deduction of three thousand two hundred and two dollars and ten cents. Essentially, just as I noted, closing out the project, rectifying project one is based on what was actually decided.
All right.
Make a motion to approve change order number one to Zach Rice Construction for a de-duck of three thousand two hundred and two dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
All right, number two, what do you got there?
Uh, next is pay application number one to Zach Rice, uh, for the project in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty cents for completion of the work.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve pay, pay application number one to Zach Rice Construction for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, seventy, seven hundred and ninety-one, eighty cents.
Second.
Any discussion?
You got through it.
You did get through it. Yeah, that was. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Shelby?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right, what's the third one?
Uh, third and last one is the application number seven to D and G Concrete for the Western Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of two hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Really, this is the east half of Diamond Trail, as well as just some carryover work that they completed on other parts of the project.
Motion to approve pay request number seven to D and G Concrete Construction for two hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
All right, what else you got, Michael?
Nothing else. Go ahead.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would assume you'll have discussion with Craig and these guys on this.
I don't think there is any more discussion, that's my opinion.
I mean, they did meet with them, and Michael's trying to explain the fact that, um, that email I could forward to the rest of the council to give you, kind of, just to kind of summarize it out for your knowledge, and we can put it on the, him on the agenda for next week if you want, but after reading through that, I really don't see it's the city's issue either, but...
We'll send that out to them, but for some, they make sure you go back to the previous, you know, just to show them the history.
Okay, do you want to do that? Are you up to it?
Can I ask a question regarding to that?
Sure, absolutely. We're still on engineering boards.
So, um, so you talked about, or, I feel like something was mentioned about the gentleman installed drainage tile?
Drain tile.
Drain tile? What, when was that?
Twenty years.
Twenty, fifteen or twelve.
Okay, so in 2015, there was issues with drainage, thus him installing drain tile, correct?
Yeah, as, so as I know, there was from that culvert under, what was it, two fifty-eight?
Two fifty-eight, yeah.
Under two fifty-eight from south to north. Uh, there's, there's a culvert there which conveys water, um, doesn't quite, there, there's no additional one north than the mark there, so it outlets through his property prior to 2015 when the drain tile was installed. There was a grass area where that water ran ultimately to a culvert, a little ways north, running under random mark from the west to the east, actually, those Craig's pond.
So this isn't just a couple of years, this is...
Well, this has been going on for a long time. Well, let's... Right.
So he works it up and now it just won't hold. I mean, every time it rains or anything like that, the drainage goes through there, which you can see it coming down through his field from his higher ground. It gets right to that same area it suggests, and it just washes the trench in there.
Well, let's get the, get the information together, let's get him on the agenda, let's get it taken care of.
We need to look at that culvert.
All right?
He did. It's clear.
All right, Craig, you're up next, but, uh, your report was, did you hand it out?
So I don't have a computer, plus I was in Germany last week.
He was out last week, and they just...
Those are bad news. Germany uses...
Oh, I thought he said Germany.
He was in Germany.
So I just jotted down a few things coming up. Um, I got A and B Concretes coming, um, next week or this weekend, actually, to start forming up out of Sports Complex. Plus, we're having to do that little pour on the sidewalk, and then they're going to do that curb up here that we had to cut out, and we took that out ourselves and got that ready for them. So we'll get some concrete work done here next week. Um, all the parks are shut down and winterized, Sanders are in, ready to go. Uh, the good news is that we are discharging from both ponds two and three right now, so we should have them empty, or just about empty by the end of November. So, your samples came back good. I talked to Daner today and got permission to discharge, so we are discharging.
Awesome.
Uh, the only other thing that Michael didn't bring up was Neil said Construction is getting, they're going on their cul-de-sac up there. They've got sewer in, waters in, they still got some services to hook up, we took a sample in today, so if that passes, the water will be all ready to go online. Uh, they are working on storm sewer, they should have that all in, except for the boxes. So you'll probably see curb and gutter next week up there, that's how fast they're moving.
Are they trying to put houses in before it snows?
I think they're going to try to get something in, because they're pretty, once they come in, they just got, they just got a crew that just keeps moving. So one guy's going to be doing footings, next one's foundation, then they got, or construction guys doing framework, so we'll move right on through. It's pretty fun to see how fast they are out there, so, and that's all I got for my makeshift report.
No, that's fine. Any questions for Craig? All right, thanks, Craig. Uh, next up, Finance Officer Report Karen.
Yep, my report's in the packet. Um, I did want to add that I got notification from First Interstate Bank yesterday that our money market rate for November did drop to three point one, it was at three point two five, so...
Okay.
For the next thirty days, and then they'll reevaluate.
Okay.
Other than that, nothing else to add.
If we can keep that up over, over, over three, that's a, that's better than zero. Right?
Sure is.
All right. Any questions for Karen? All right, Teresa, what do you got to add to your report?
Not a whole lot to add. I kind of sent out a text to let you know, um, our new public works assistant is planning to start on the seventeenth here, so we will, looking forward to getting him added as our Craig is very much, to get him up and going and get him working. And then I just, I put in my report, Darrell was right, St. George did change their date. They came in after the council meeting and said they weren't, uh, I think they spent sometime in the spring, is that what they were talking about?
February is what he thought, but they would...
We just told them, just come back to us when they're ready for the new date, and then we can begin, so... We are working with Tom as far as, um, the new election criteria that was passed us last year. In January, I mentioned this before, we can no longer have our elections in April, which is how our ordinance is state. Now we either got to move to June or November, so we'll have that discussion in January, because we need to set it in January, um, what date we want to go with. But before the, actually have an election, the municipal league, the state, they're referring us to our city attorneys. There's a lot of gray area in the law about how to combine the elections, so there's, I think there's going to be more information coming out as we go. They're trying to get an attorney general's opinion, just because, like, if we would combine with this, we have overlapping districts, so how does that be on one ballot? How do you have a roll book, who you know, what the difference, there's just a lot of things that need to be worked out, which I, I think they're working on. So, um, we're going to keep working with Tom and just make sure we redo it correctly there. Um, otherwise, I don't have much more in my packet. Landfill passes, I contacted Sioux Falls to see if we can get the free passes again, and basically, they says, now with their new system, we don't even have to apply for them, they just automatically are giving them to all the cities in the, in the county that are within Minneah County. You know, if you're a resident in Minneah County, you come, show your driver's license with your address, you automatically get a free dump. So we don't have to even go through that application process anymore, so that's kind of good on our part, kind of like simplify stuff for us. And then, um, I didn't know, Craig and I did do sidewalk inspections for Ward One this year, and so letters were sent out, so you hear anybody talking about them, you know. Our policy right now is, we notify them if they got an issue with their sidewalk, stating that per state law, it's their liability, but we don't have anything in ordinance yet that mandates it, we just notify them, and it kind of clears us as far as insurance-wise, if, you know, somebody would happen to get hurt, well, we've got a record, yeah, they were notified about this, it is their liability, but... So, and we've been doing this for quite a few years now, so, but just to let you know...
We got a question on that. Why, um, why are, is our code enforcer not, because so like, I, and I'm just asking a question, so we got two of our highest-paid people in the city doing sidewalk inspections, doesn't make a lot of sense for like the use of time, so like, we've got a, a kind of two-part-time code enforcement, what, commercial, is there a way to make that? I mean, I, I just, I don't know why, you know, or, you know, maybe some other...
Started doing it, and we actually got it done pretty well.
Yeah, I, I get that. We got it pretty quick.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I believe you do. I believe you do, but it just seems like we have a code enforcer, like...
It takes two people really to do it.
It does, because one's driving and you're looking at both sides of the streets and riding, it does take two people.
I believe that.
And I would be...
Is it, or you guys are two right people to do that, and you guys have a bunch of stuff to do.
I can pass.
But I'm sure you guys love it.
All right.
I don't care who does it, it's just, we've got a code enforcer, why is he not doing it?
Um, especially, you know, if, if we move Kyle in full-time, maybe definitely we'll have time to do some of those extra duties, so, yeah.
All right, good one. Anything else for Teresa? Is the sidewalk committee still you three?
No, I'm not on there.
Oh, you do. I heard you talking earlier, you going to try to get a meeting set up?
Yeah.
Okay.
For Monday.
All right.
If you want my opinion, though, you can text me.
That's not, no, I...
No, they don't.
If you're not going to be on the committee, I'll watch your opinion, yeah, that's fine.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, you got booed. Okay. All right, we have no old business. Under new business, we have one item, review approved the billboard lease renewal for Golden West Communications.
I'll make a motion to approve the billboard lease renewal of Golden West Telecommunications.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Shelby?
Yes.
Haracheck?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right. Uh, under correspondence, I think Teresa put this in her, in her update this week. We got an invite to the HADF Annual Meeting, which is two weeks from tomorrow night, Wednesday, November nineteenth, at the golf course, and I think it said on there they wanted us to RSVP, or you all, you need us to know, need to know, so...
I need to know so we don't got a quorum.
Right.
Just to make sure.
I will, I have another, uh, meeting that night, so I will not be there.
I will be out of town, the midget.
Thanks for sharing.
My facts about my life.
So those two are out, even if you guys decide to go.
They'll be fine.
We will be fine for us hard quorum-wise, so, um, yeah, if you do want to, if you do want to go and you go on RSVP, you can, you go ahead then, so...
All right. I have a couple matters for executive session for legal and economic development, if somebody would like to make that.
Motion to go into executive session for legal and economic development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I told Travis, I said, I was kind of mad. He said, I'm just trying to keep you from getting beat up. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Let's move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.